The time of our convening has been reached. At this point, if we would call the row, please. Present.
Present.
Here. I believe we have six in attendance currently. That does constitute a call. At this point, we will move to the next item on the agenda. Trustee James Johnson, if you'd be kind to lead us in the pledge. We will begin our meeting with citizen participation. As a reminder, all citizens who have signed up to present will be granted three minutes for their public comment. I will read these off in the order in which they were presented to me. So first, Mr. Cummins. You are recognized.
Good afternoon, everybody. As I said, I'd be here every time while I'm in town. Thank you for your service. I know you've been here almost three years. The, I think you're going to be the sixth change in command. And most of the management has changed, which tells me nobody here is in charge. So why don't we find out who's actually making the decisions and have them come in and just talk to us? Because this isn't where it's happening. You can't have a management change six times and tell me anybody's in charge. That's bullshit. I know Derek may be up for it, which I think he'd make a good manager. But I do want to point out, we ran against each other in a deal. And some of his volunteers physically threatened volunteers of mine. And he was unaware of it. He called me afterwards, let me know. But that's what we already got going on in the jail. Kind of concerns me. Doesn't really matter whoever gets moved out. Literally, it doesn't matter at this point. But I would like to suggest, maybe, I know you're not leaving permanently, but maybe we just find out, who do we actually need to meet with? Who's actually in charge? Because this ain't it. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Ms. Kearns, Mr. Kearns, my apologies. Mr. Kearns, my apologies.
I can't pronounce it.
You are recognized.
I am Ferlin Kearns, and I'm actually a member of the Citizens Advisory Board to this trust. And so those of you that I haven't met, nice to meet you. The irony of a trust that's been entrusted to run a jail that's full of lawbreakers, and we're violating the law perpetually with this trust. We've got members on this trust that are not residents of Oklahoma County. They're not citizens of Oklahoma County, which is in a direct violation of Oklahoma law. This trust was set up, as you know, pursuant to Title 60 of the Oklahoma statutes. Title 60 provides that a trust must comply with all provisions of Title 60 and any other sections of the law. Well, another section of law that it must comply with is Title 19. Title 19, it's very clear. The appointed members shall be residents of the county and shall not be elected officials. So we've got to fix this. We can't have people on this trust that are not members, residents of Oklahoma County. We've got to fix that. We've got, the indenture itself provides that people on the trust must be residents of Oklahoma County. Now, they did try to amend that at one point. In order to amend the indenture, it takes five of nine of the trustees and two-thirds of the county commissioners. Two-three vote. So it passed six to nine, the trust. It never went in front of the county commissioner. So the amendment that was filed with the Secretary of State shows that it passed the trust, but it never passed the county commissioner. So we've got to fix this. This trust deals with hundreds of millions of dollars of taxpayer money. We hire and fire the administrators of the jail. We make contracts with the jail. We do things that are going to affect the taxpayers of Oklahoma County and the property owners of Oklahoma County. It needs to be only members of Oklahoma County. So we're in violation of Oklahoma law. We're in violation of the, of the trust. All principles of federalism, we're in violation of, but just common sense. We can't have people out of the county making decisions on what goes on within this county and taxpayers' money. So we need to fix it. Ms. Griffin, you can resign, which you, you're laughing. So the alternative to that is, I've got a petition ready seeking declaratory judgment and injunctive relief in Oklahoma County. We can solve it in this room, on this side of the alley, or we can go across the alley, and we can get a district judge to decide for us. But we need to fix this. You know, we're part of enforcing, we're part of enforcing the law. We need to be on top of it. Thank you.
Wrap it up. Thank you. Mr. Falk, you are next.
So about an hour ago, we visited Antonio Hendricks, who is in the hospital here. He is still unconscious. They tried to take out his breathing tube, I guess, this morning or yesterday, and that failed. So he is still with the breathing tube. I can't tell you. I can't, I can't tell you how difficult this is. Because I can't go there without thinking that five months ago, we were supposed to do an evaluation of this board, of this trust. And it was handed to the Board of County Commissioners five months ago. Not another word has been said. In those five months, there have been more deaths. In those five months, Antonio Hendricks was, we believe, beaten by guards in that jail, and it's in a coma. I'm sorry to say that, but this is, this is on you. This is, this is on you. For every day that we are shorthanded there, every day that we don't have enough people to do site checks, every day that we have too many people in that jail who shouldn't be there, including Antonio, who shouldn't have even been there, an 18-year-old son. The jail didn't even do a report to the Department of Health. They did not file an incident report. The State Department of Health heard about this on the news. If that happened one time, I bet you it's happened 100 times. What is being swept under the rug every single day in that jail? I could tell you that we need to disband this trust, but I feel like it's eventually going to just disband itself. Now, I know you'll pick a new chair today. My last comment I want to make is, I, I watched Pastor Scobie, who had an incident, and I, and I am not questioning the validity of what happened there and what happened to your wife up in Edmond. But what I am questioning is your multiple derogatory remarks against trans people on your page. You kept referring to a trans woman as a man in a dress repeatedly. Now, trans people are at a much higher rate in that jail. Black trans women is the highest demographic of people arrested in the country. I don't believe someone who has an obvious transphobia is the person we want as the chair of that trust.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Falk. Ms. Poplin.
Hello. And just to follow up what Mark said about Antonio Hendricks, I speak to his mother on a daily basis to check on him. This is his third time admitted to St. Anthony's. This is his second time in a coma. And that young boy has not got to go home yet. He's supposed to get to walk the stage in May for his high school. And they're having to move him to Tulsa to get better help. Your building didn't do this to him. Another inmate didn't, according to him. And neither did OCPD, as it was very well stated to me by a staff member from the Oklahoma County Detention Center. Now, that I'm done with that, I do not condone in any way what happened to your wife. I apologize that that happened to your wife. But I would like for you to explain, because you've been ignoring me a lot. But you said something on the news that you advocate for the least, the left out, and the left behind. I want to know who that is, because it ain't nobody in the jail. Minus Wayne Saucier, when you got him booked in after 48 hours, and you got him released after 15 hours after his bond was paid. But you're not advocating for those people in that jail that are getting beaten and tortured, and it's inhumane. They're getting killed. They're given drugs. I keep trying to tell y'all, and y'all are not listening to me about the damn drugs and where they're coming from. You're in law enforcement. You should want to know that, so you could go in there and arrest the people that are doing it. Y'all, it don't matter. Y'all could walk away today. Each and every one of y'all, you too, Kimery, although you're brand new. You got blood on your hands, and there's some that's got more blood than others. But we want an accurate account for '23 and '24. How many times NSA was over there picking up those inmates? Because Brandy was slimy.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Bana, you are next.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chairman Buck, I want to thank you and applaud you for your desire to serve. However, I just want to be transparent that in that time of your service, the conditions have not improved in the Oklahoma County Jail. As a matter of fact, for the last five years of the, since the inception of this jail trust, the conditions at the deadliest unconstitutional county jail in America have not improved. However, they have become more chaotic, more dangerous, more deadly, and more corrupt. I have repeatedly demanded, as have many others, for the dissolution of this corrupt body whose only and sole purpose has become a buffer to deflect any responsibility from our county commissioners, politicians, who don't want the weight and the criticism that comes with overseeing the jail. You point us to them, they point us to you. And there has been no accountability for over 58 Oklahomans who perished in that jail. Pastor Scobie, I have a lot of respect for you. We've had a few encounters. I will tell you, I applaud you. If the allegations being made by your wife against transgender women are true, I applaud your apt fortitude to stand up for her as a woman who was upskirted by the former executive aide of the Governor and Governor Fallon's office. I know what that feels like when law enforcement do not do their job. However, I would beg and plead with you that you show the same type of fortitude for the women who have been jailed, who have been raped in that same facility that you yourself oversee. And for the many mothers whose children have unnecessarily have had to be buried in the last five years. And I believe you've been, as you claim, have been the longest-serving trustee on this board. We need accountability, and we need accountability from leaders of our communities like yourself. Some of you all I don't even know. I used to be able to name every trustee on my hands for nearly three years, but the rotation has literally, it just baffles me. I asked Commissioner Davidson today if I could ask to nominate Sheriff Johnson to be the next chairperson, but unfortunately, due to state statute, that is prohibited. I beg and plead with you, you have the power and authority to dissolve this trust and hand over this jail in crisis to the duly-elected sheriff in this county, who we all trust to turn this sinking ship around. Thank you.
Mr. Johnston, you're recognized.
Afternoon, everybody. I really love this quote by journalist Charles M. Blow. "One doesn't have to operate with great malice to do great harm. The absence of empathy and understanding are sufficient." And that's what we've been dealing with for years, is what I feel, people who don't feel like they've got skin in the game and just kind of let things be what they be. As we have seen through countless reports, consultations, health department reports, and just opening up our eyes and see, it's not a building, right? Doesn't mean it's an architectural masterpiece. We have to always do those caveats. But it's management. It's people. That's the problem. We've, none of the advisory groups have done really much. This isn't for lack of trying. There's been some good things that's come out. But as you can see, no substantive change. They do not take what you say. We've had tons of consultation already, National Institute of Corrections, the Attorney General's Office, yada, yada, yada. And now we hired an ed, an educational consulting, consultation firm, NPR guy. And he's, he's smart. I like him just fine. This is no shot across the bow for Dr. McDaniels, but he, I think he is woefully unqualified to do this. I do know there have been instances where we've had people outside of the realm, but I doubt the sheriff or any other law enforcement agency would hire a dental firm to advise their law enforcement agency. Like I wouldn't hire a doctor to be my plumber. We would need to hire people who understand the state statutes, municipal codes, so on, so on, and so forth. And I think that this was, once again, a failure of leadership. Anybody who studies anything dealing with facilities that have drug issues knows that the staff's bringing it in. There are people, more than likely, some leadership, some employees, that continue to bring in drugs. Still has not been addressed, maybe trying to be addressed, but nonetheless, we have failed. We're seeing two more folks stepping away from their positions, and I'm assuming will be stepping away really soon. I think that that is indicative, because we're, it's musical chairs at this point. I mean, when do we finally do something? We must be brave and dissolve this trust. And to the county commissioner here, even to the sheriff, to any politicians listening, that you still can advocate for your tax. You still can advocate for more money. You don't need this body. It says nowhere in the Attorney General opinion that you must maintain this board. It says you must fund the jail and you must run it. It doesn't say that it's got to be these folks. And I do know Attorney General Ginnner Drummond is very specific when he said, I know the state statute said, not just the sheriff, but he made a point to end it with the sheriff.
Thank you for your comments. Thank all members of the public for their comments. At this point, we'll move into the business items on our agenda. Agenda item number one is approval of minutes from our October 30th special meeting. What is the pleasure of the trust? So there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to pass or to approve the minutes. Call the row, please. Yes?
Yes.
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 By vote of 6-0, the item advances. At this point, we're ready for agenda item number two under departmental items. Mr. Kimery, you are recognized.
Good morning, board. I don't know about y'all, but I'm certainly enjoying this, this cool weather. Having a little technical difficulty here. There we go. Okay, just a few things I want to go over today. One more time, our inmate transportation, our academy, our medical staff upgrades, our technology update, and some current resident statistics. I know we talked about this the last time I briefed. I won't brief this again, but I just wanted to go over this one last time. We took some additional pictures. I wanted you to see, you know, clearly inside the vehicles that we purchased and all the, the safety concerns that we've addressed. We have three new vehicles that are currently in service. That gives us a total of four. And next slide, please. These vehicles are currently being outfitted this week with internal and external cameras by Metro Emergency Upfitters in Edmond. So make sure that we've got eyes on our people for safety and security reasons during transportation. That should be completed this week, so our vehicles be totally outfitted and, and ready to go. Our DOC sent us inmates. Like I said before, we worked out a, an agreement with DOC. There was a slot modification for this week and next week to where they couldn't take these folks because of a, I believe it was down at Comanche County invoked the 72-hour rule, which made it where we had to adjust our schedule a little bit. But once this is done, over the next two weeks, we'll be going back to the 36 inmates per week. We'll be going down to Lexington and over to Maple Bassett for our females. Next slide. We just had a recent graduation on Halloween. Appreciate the board member Holman being there. That was very nice. I will say that we graduated 13 cadets. However, we've already had one that has already resigned to take a, a better-paying job. That, that's a problem, because I, we're really proud of the, of the training that we have over there. I think it's probably some of the best training as far as for detention officers in the state, if not probably in this region. But the problem is that once we get them trained up and are that good, then other people want them, and they decide to pay them more money. So that's a problem we got to address and correct. Our total medical, we have added a total of 15 new medical folks on the staff up there. It's made a huge, huge difference. So we're very, very proud and pleased with, with the numbers so far. One area that we're still kind of lacking in is our med passers. That seems to be a really tough position for us to fill. We had about four of them last week, and, and most of those have left since, since last week. So going to address that this week, see what we can't do to kind of bridge that gap and figure out how we can retain these folks. Our integrity communication solution, this is a company, this is this new technology that we've implemented up there. This is totally complete, all the software, all the hardware is in place. This is just where we can have better eyes on our inmates, where we can monitor them better. This, this measures heart rate and breathing and things like that. So it's still in its testing phase, but we were anticipating that probably by the first of the year, that this is going to be up and running. We currently have 43 radars installed. All these are on the 13th floor. And like I said, we're thinking that testing, according to the, the owner of the company, we had a meeting with him, and most of the bugs have been worked out on this. And so I think this will be fully operational by the first of the year. Okay, our maintenance currently at our facility over there, we've, we've completed the final testing on the HVAC system over there, and that all passed. And so we have full certification, we've got full certification on that on the HVAC. We did get green, we got a green tag for annual fire alarm. Green tag basically equates to everything is in good working order, and we passed that inspection also. We also put in 15 new cell doors for the port modifications, okay? Where we hand the inmates their food. So we finished that. This is one, the picture on the right, that's one that's being completed. That offers a little bit of better safety and security for, for our inmates and our, and our staff. Okay? We also, as far as IT technology goes, we purchased 55 new mounts for some new computers. And then our SADA fiber upgrade, which is a fiber cable. It runs around the building, it enables the sliders to our control center to be able to talk a little bit better and makes it a little bit more operational. All right, jail tracker, our current status. We have a two-year contract with Jail Tracker. It's $175,000 a year for service and maintenance. We made some changes. We currently had one, we currently have 1,185 active accounts. We suspended over 1,600 of those accounts due to inactivity. In other words, people weren't using them, and it's been over a year. So we turned those off, suspended them. There's some future changes. Incident reporting disciplinary, train for staff. We're currently, and we're looking into kind of a new system, jail management system that may do a little bit, a little bit more robust, do a little bit more than what Jail Tracker is doing right now. But those are just initial stages. We're just looking, we're not making a big change anytime soon on that. All right, Criminal Investigation Division currently have 12 charges filed, had 18 new cases open for October, and we closed 14. Breakdown in charges, this is not all of them, this is just a few of the kind of top ones. Possession of contraband inside a jail facility, trafficking drugs, conspiracy, and computer crimes. Next slide. Wanted you to, I thought this was an important slide. We have really made a big effort, something that I don't think was done in the past. But I instructed our investigations division, our intelligence folks, to start doing these cell searches from top to bottom, back to front, corner to corner. And we have, these are just some of the shanks that we recovered in October out of these cells. You see in that picture. Now, if you'll, in the, the, over to the right in the black, this is a, I had the, the audio of this was going to play, but it's, it's a little bit hard to understand in this, in this open room right here. But this is basically what it said, the inmate said, "I, I need to know, I know I need to send 200 ASAP." The inmate replied, "This is an intercept that we made over telephone call, okay?" Said, "Did he ever send you the cash app back?" Caller said, "Hold on, I'm working it right now." He said, "My plug," which means somebody on the outside, "doesn't think you're going to land in there. It's too hot." He said, "You can do it if you want, I'm just letting you know." That phrase, "it's too hot," that brings a smile to my face, okay? Because that means we're doing our job, and we're getting the drugs and the contraband out of there. Okay, so we're, we're pleased, we're pleased, really pleased with that. So.
Did he ever send you the cash app back?
Um, hold on, I'm looking right now. See if I, if I have this there. But no, it, he said, "My plug said he doesn't think you're going to land there too hot. You can do what you want, I'm sweating out."
There you go. So that was, that was. There you go. So that was that was good news to us. It's too hot, and we're going to make it too hot. We're going to continue to make it too hot till we get as much contraband as we can cleaned up in that jail. Okay, our medical division progress. One thing that really focused on, I wanted to identify an upgrade was our our whole medical wing up there, our clinic, so to speak. It was in dire need of some improvements. We purchased a brand-new EKG machine. We purchased two medical stretcher beds, as you can see in that picture right there. What we were using in the past was just, if you remember, if you played sports of any kind in high school, the old training bed, whatever you want to call it, table, training table, you hopped up on, that was kind of what we were using over there. Thought that was unacceptable, so we found the money and we purchased these two really nice stretcher beds that are what they currently use in the hospitals. We also purchased for all of our our pregnant females over there, wanted to do something a little bit more comfortable for them. So we purchased new new mattresses for them. They're a little bit more comfortable, a little thicker than what regular folks have. So we're getting these for our pregnant females and our our elderly folks. Statistics for October, we had fifty-two ER visits. Twenty-three inmates spent a total of eighty days in the hospital. I was told today, briefed this morning at our staff meeting, we have zero people in the hospital today, so it's good news. As far as Narcan, as far as Narcan being deployed, we had Narcan deployed, used by three medical staff for October, and we had one OCD staff member that used Narcan on on one of our inmates. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. I want to make sure that we recognize our veterans that work at the Oklahoma County Detention Center. This is a pure their faces there. I just want to say happy Veterans Day to to everybody in this room and in this audience that have served in the military for thank you for your service. And I hope you all have a safe and happy Veterans Day. Something else that we've made focused on and made great strides on, around October the third, we had almost seventeen hundred inmates, okay? Today, we have right around fifteen hundred. So we reduced our population over two hundred folks in the last forty-two days. Thirty-two days, I'm sorry. You can see our average population for those years. Right now, we're sitting at about fifteen thirty-two. So it continues to come down. We're going to keep working on that. Our population statistics pretty much remained the same as it was the last couple of months. Not a big change in any of those. I wanted to put this slide in here for you, okay? This is something that we looked into. This is Oklahoma City Police Department, October bookings. They had a total of one thousand one hundred ninety-three people that were brought in. Out of that, four hundred eighty-four were city charges only. That means they, these were just someone that was issued a citation or a municipal warrant they had, okay? The other seven hundred nine were state and city charges combined. Now, out of that four hundred eighty-four, oh, three hundred and ninety-eight were released in less than ten hours. Now, eighty-six of those had a greater than ten hour release time due to being required to appear before the municipal court for the judge. Okay? So I thought those were some interesting numbers. Those numbers were pulled directly from jail tracker. Directly from jail tracker. Okay, current population, our charges. As you can see, we still have a hundred and fifty-one folks in there for murder, manslaughter. We have a hundred and thirty-seven that are male. We have two females. Fifteen sixty as far as our criminal felonies are concerned, and nine forty-four on misdemeanors. All right, once again, just by one, one percent possession of CDS is our top current charges, followed by firearms by a felon. And that is, the possession of CDS is one that's I think is increased just a little bit. Trafficking in drugs, all the rest of them. This pretty much fluctuates every month, just depending on, you know, who's arrested for what. Arresting agencies for October, again, Oklahoma City Police Department is our top agency, followed by Oklahoma County Sheriff's Office, Edmond Police Department of Dell City, and Midwest City Police Department, respectively. Next slide, please. Our special special housing, we have about two hundred and fifty on average per day that's in protective custody. And we have about three hundred and thirty-one that are on MHO, which is our mental health observation. So that's a, as far as our protective custody goes, that's minus eighteen from September. That's down, but we're up on MHO about fourteen. Okay, homeless, wanted to get this back in here and talk about this. We did did a lot of digging, a deep dive, finding out exactly kind of what our our homeless situation was. This is information that is totally based, solely based on their individual reporting. When they're brought in, when they're asked, are you homeless? Where do you live? So this is, again, strictly what they're telling us. There's not, really not a a really good way to independently verify their status. Okay, this, again, this is self-reporting, so these numbers are going to be probably skewed one way or the other. Our total bookings for October was two hundred ninety-seven. Out of that, two ninety-seven, twenty-three were repeats, okay? And let me also say that as far as the homeless goes, we pulled some folks that had claimed that they were homeless or put homeless on the self-reporting. We went back and looked at them in jail tracker and stuff like that. These individuals actually had residence that they had posted on previous visits to the jail that had been there before. So they had, they may not be, they may be homeless now, but they, at one time, they they did have a home. Okay, just some of our programs real quick. This was kind of an issue this week. I just want to make sure everybody understands diversion hub is not going away. I think there was some miscommunication there. We're just kind of, we're doing a little two-week reassessment on our programs. It's not going away. We feel diversion hub is a very important program. And I assured Megan that that we, that that's not, that's happening. We're just kind of reviewing all of our programs. Most of that is due to staff. Staffing is kind of a problem. I want to make sure that we have enough people that's able to make sure that these programs are working correctly. But also, I also have to look at the safety and security of the people that that work there in the jail, so. But I assure you, it's not going away, going away. Current programs are prison fellowship by Lee Roberts and Teresa Stanfield, our AA. Our job placement, our GED by the Urban League, all this stuff is still in play. I did talk to a couple more nonprofits and some jail ministries that would like to come in. Going to meet with them this week, so we can sit down and see if we can't get them, get them in there. And I did talk to Doug Miller today, so had a good conversation with him, and we'll be meeting with him very, very soon. And I think that's it, pending any questions.
Questions for the administrator?
I just have one question on the transport vehicles.
Yes, sir.
With the secure part, does that, does it come that way?
Yes, sir.
Be removed? I'm asking, do you have, do you have a lot of wear and tear on the vehicles if you just, maybe not, if you just go into Lexington and Maple Basset?
I mean, no, I mean, as far as the the wear and tear of the vehicles, they should last for a considerable amount of time. These these vehicles come already equipped, you know, built. We were lucky in that regard. It usually takes six to eight months to get those built per our request and get them shipped to us. We found those three that were out there in different places across the country that other agencies didn't decide not to take. And we made the right calls and and just, you know, stars kind of aligned where we was able to get those three that were totally fully outfitted. The only thing that they didn't have was the cameras, and like I said, they're doing that right now in Edmond for us.
Well, the company Bob Barker makes one where when the engine blows, whatever, you can remove the secure part out that puts the camera and just bolt another one in the brand new van, so. But again, if you not have a whole lot of wear and tear, but you know, so that is.
Yes, yes.
We were driving all over the state, and so we put a lot of miles in it, but it's nice that from the van where it's out, you just unbolt it and pull out the secure.
Pull it out, yes. Yes, sir.
Pastor Scobie, did you have a question?
Couple, couple of different things. You mentioned diversion hub, and I remember probably a year ago, no, not even a year ago, when we had our former interim jail administrator, CEO, and we discussed, no, let me back up to when it was actually our CEO and jail administrator, Brandy Garner, we had talked about allowing for, having a discussion to allow for mothers to come in and visit, our children to come in and visit their mothers, okay? You have nothing to do with that, but it just went away, blew away in the wind, like we never had that conversation, and nobody ever brought it up again other than our former interim, mentioned it like the first month that he was still looking to it, it never happened. No problem. It is a problem, but it's not your problem. But you mentioned diversion hub, and then you you started to talk about that it wouldn't go away, but there's certain safety and security, et cetera, et cetera. I I need to hear from you that diversion hub is not going away under any circumstances for the foreseeable future. And stand-up, the stand-up part of that, I think it's called stand-up.
Yes, it is.
That John Parker leads is not going anywhere. And let me give everybody a backdrop to to give this narrative, a true narrative. John Parker, born and raised right off a knife and and Jordan. And he got into gangs right after high school. And then there was, he he committed a murder, and he went to prison for, I don't know, maybe fifteen years. So he's been out, and God has done a whole bunch of things in his life. He's worked for diversion hub for some time. He is sitting with the young men and older that are there in that, in the county jail. He's making a difference in their life, the same way that Mr. Glenn Simmons made a difference in his life when he came into an Oklahoma State Penitentiary. They are quote-unquote, some would venture to say they're hardened criminals. And let me just mention for the record that the detention center is not full of of criminals. Like, you know, everyone in there is not guilty. They're innocent until proven guilty. I just want to put that out for the record. Because sometime we have Mr. Goody Two Shoes that say stupid statements like that. So he is making a difference, and I just want to make sure that that is not removed. Now, I know we can't, we can't say, never say never, but I want to make sure that is not going anywhere.
Pastor, as long as I'm the administrator, it's not going anywhere, and I mean, there's a stand-up program.
I'm good. I just wanted, wanted to reiterate.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you mentioned the ministry part being in there, which, I mean, that's, that's great. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't have ministries, new ministries in there, but the diversion hub was in there. So we have, it shows nineteen hundred and fifty-three people booked into custody in October, fourteen hundred and seventy-eight were men, four hundred and seventy-five women. First, let me ask you this. If a person is is booked in and they say that they're white and they look like me, Mr. Johnson, and Sheriff Johnson, and they say they're white, what do we do with that? This, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not luring you into this nothing. I I I'm I'm needing for you to share, so I can share and I can make a point. So what do we do?
I don't think we've actually had someone that's actually done that.
No, I'm not saying they have. I'm saying what if they did?
What if they did? I'm not going to dictate dictate to somebody what their race is going to be. If they are adamant about being white or Asian or or black or any other ethnicity.
If you, now, let me just say, if it were me, and they told me that they were white and they look like us, let me tell you the face I would give them.
Well, I I didn't want to say that here, but that's obviously, that's, you know, we would have that same reaction, but.
What if they say they're a rabbit?
If they're a rabbit?
Yeah. Would you have a, would you have a line item for a rabbit?
We would note that they stated that.
Okay.
But we would not identify them as a rabbit.
So you have identified one thousand four hundred seventy-eight as men. Do do the people, like people in there who are obviously a man, do you put them over in the 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 women's category?
No.
You don't? So you don't, so I want to go on record, I wanted to go on record. The Oklahoma County Detention Center does not put them down as another gender.
We put down what they state.
Okay.
But as far as classification, we do have alternate locations, cells that we do for those that identify of a different.
But you have them down, whatever gender they are.
I'd have to pull and look it, look it up.
So, so me, I have a book that supersedes every area of my life. So it's often, like, people come at me, and Sheriff Johnson, I know it's not crossed off, I want to tell them, meet me at eleven oh five Northeast Twenty-First in Stonewall where I grew up, because I'm angry, okay? Tell them, I I I don't tell them. I I want to tell them. Meet me at eleven oh five Northeast Twenty-First, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma seven three one one one, because I'm angry. But then I have a book that supersedes me making a statement like that, okay? I I'm just talking to you, but I'm just, I have a book, and it's called the Holy Bible. So the Holy Bible supersedes my life in that. Oh, I come up short every day in it. But the book that I hold to, also, it lets me know, male, female. So nobody can make me say nothing that the book tells me I ought not to live by. So I live in a an Oklahoma state and country that you can't make nobody say, I can't say to Miles, you tell me you're a rabbit? I'm gonna say, Miles, no, you're not. You are a man, and that's it. Miles cannot make me say anything other than that. All Miles' homeboys, Miles likes to hunt. I like to hunt. But all his hunting buddies could come with shotguns and say, you better address Miles as a rabbit. I'll say, you out of your mind, and I'm not going to address him as a rabbit. Case closed. Okay, so we we don't believe that we have this contract dispute between Oklahoma County Detention Center, which really would be the jail trust and Oklahoma City Police Department. That has not been executed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we we had, and I'm glad that you that you 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 clarified, you put an emphasis on something. I'm really glad you did, because you said four hundred and eighty-four arrests were, oh, the other way. Well, okay, well, I have it here, so. Four hundred, thank you, four hundred and eighty-four, thank you. Four hundred and eighty-four city charges only. Great job of getting three hundred and ninety-eight released in less than ten hours. So obviously, it leaves eighty-six, and I'm sure that probably was sixteen, eighteen, twenty hours. Great job of getting that down. So four hundred and eighty-four city charges only. So four hundred and eighty-four city charges only, and we haven't gotten the contract in place. And without talking the specifics of the contract negotiations, right now, realistically, per this, we're no more than hmm, twelveish and cha- twelve and change apart, twelve and change. I don't have to say, it may be twelve dollars, maybe twelve hundred, maybe twelve thousand, but you know. So being that we don't have, I'm kind of saying the way I want to, like growing up, we don't have no money. So we need that hundred thousand a month. We're, we're too close as a relation to negotiation. Now, you're not the one that makes the decision, okay? Trust us, but you're a part of those negotiations. So I highly recommend, and I ask, I plead, that you would get on board with, we have to put this contract to bed. Because right now, um, my math, I don't know all that other stuff, trig and calc, I don't know all that, but I know how to add. Right now, we're losing about four thousand dollars a month, give or take, in interest alone. So we, we need to put this to get bed because we have no money and to speak of. And we're only about twelveish apart. We gotta put that to bed. Last thing. The last thing. You and I, we owe the citizens of Oklahoma County an apology. You and I, we ban, and it was, it's on record, so we can, we can talk about it. You and I have bantered back and forth a couple of weeks ago. And both of us, we owe the citizens of Oklahoma County, um, a, uh, an apology. A real man can step up and say they were wrong. I did that with a buddy of mine down on the other side of his horseshoe one, one day. I was wrong to say you should ramp up staff for the Christian concert. I was wrong. I was being extreme. And this is not a I told you so dance. This is, we know that it was, you know, six to eight arrests misdemeanors really, and they were not even immediate. They were not in the immediate area of pay comp. But that's the, that's the average amount of arrests per, uh, per weekend. I'm almost done, Mr. Chair. And this is, this is solely for us to, to, um, to do what's right and apologize, not to one another, to citizens of Oklahoma County. You, you said in that, the news, it wasn't a news story, it's what we said in here, I'm just reading from here. You said there are many times, I know, not in my current position, but that I have, had come in to work certain events and staff. But your, the vantage point you were, you were looking at this per what was coming out of your mouth was more so from like a Sheriff Johnson standpoint, our chief basie, our law enforcement, things they have to deal with out there. Not things that we have to deal with, we as in the detention staff. It's just about, um, uh, a lo-, uh, more of an influx of people, but not the danger that they deal with out there. Because by the time they get, no, no, because it's just influx. That's all it is. It was just influx and now I was wrong with going as extreme as I deal with the Christian concert. Do you feel like maybe you were wrong to even bring it up? About the, about bringing in more staff?
That assessment was done for a reason and it was for an internal only. It was not for distribution.
I never saw that, so.
It was not for distribution. It was internal only. Now, what other law enforcement agencies do, that's their business. My job was to make sure that, that we were prepared and that's all I was doing.
Okay, I'm, I'm done, done with this. You just said, and serve respectfully, I'm sorry, I apologize to the citizens of Oklahoma County for me even going to that ridiculous and extreme of bring more law enforcement in for the Christian concert. I was absolutely wrong and out of line, but her, here, here's, here's, here's what you just said. It doesn't matter what other law enforcement agencies do.
No, 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 I said, they, they can do what you.
Other law enforcement agencies. We're not a law enforcement agency. I know you've been in law enforcement for a long time. The detention center is not a law enforcement agency. That's why you all don't carry any type of firearms.
Well, that's not correct, sir.
We're not, but.
We do, we have over twenty-one police certified and clean, the counsel and law for the education training. They, they categorize us as a law enforcement agency.
So I apologize not to you. I'm not disrespectful, I'm just saying to, to the residents of Oklahoma County, I should not have said that. Oklahoma City Police Department, they didn't say that they increased law enforcement.
Nope.
And we shouldn't have said it. We shouldn't have said it either. I'm of the opinion.
Yeah, I, I, I will admit that I probably used the wrong.
Well, you and I are good. Yeah, I'm just saying our, our residents of Oklahoma County, that was all, so we're good. I, thank you for, uh, sharing those other things. Thank you.
And if you're, if you're a hunter, I got a lot of deer in my backyard I need eradicated, so.
You got some quail.
I'll take that too.
Other questions or comments from members of the trust? Absent those, what's the pleasure of the body?
Move to accept.
There's been a motion to accept and there is a second on that. Any further conversation, discussion, absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By vote of six zero, the director's report is accepted, received. Um, at this point, I believe we are ready for agenda item number, uh, three, which is the presentation of income statements and financial reports. This is listed under you, Mr. Kimery, but I believe you are yielding.
I will yield to this after.
Thank you. You're recognized.
Good afternoon. I'm just going to do a quick overview of our financial situation, um, as is, um, in October twenty twenty-five. Our expenses were less than we had budgeted for September, or I'm sorry, October, by the amount of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, five hundred and thirty-six. We've put down some of the notable differences. Salaries, wages and benefits came in lower than budgeted. As you'll see down below, we used those funds to, um, re-, uh, outsource professional services. Um, so that is the professional service other, the, um, deficit there of the hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight eighty-three. Those kind of offset each other. Professional, uh, service legal fees were higher than budgeted. Um, we had to retain outside counsel, um, to find like a case and, uh, so we did go over budget on that. We were under budget, um, on detainee prescriptions and off-site medical care. That twenty-eight thousand that we, um, expended was only for the prescriptions. Um, we are working on, we're looking at the invoice from Heritage for, um, for October. And, um, excuse me, um, we'll, um, pay that once we are confident that, um, everything is invoiced correctly. I do want to mention that we are doing a deep dive into our finances. We're reviewing our contracts. We are scrutinizing invoices. It is a process and as you know, I'm new and Kim is new. It's going to take a little bit of time, but we are committed to providing consistent and reliable information to you at these meetings. For revenues, we were slightly, um, below budgeted revenue of, um, twelve thousand, four hundred and six dollars. Notable variances where the commissary was, um, was higher than budgeted. That again is the same, um, fifty thousand that we had last, at the last meeting. It's a partial guaranteed commissions payment, um, per the contract. And as I understand it, we'll have one more of those in the, in next month. Contract negotiations with the OCPD are scheduled for November seventeenth. So we're hoping to have, you know, a resolution there, um, have that taken care of. Fees and reimbursements, um, those were above budget, sorry, um, due to some, um, different items that we had, a worker's compensation audit refund and an insurance claim for a vehicle that accounted for those. So in summary, um, for the month of October, we produced a net loss for the month of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. Any questions?
Any questions from my colleagues, commissioner?
Just real quick, how many months have we gone without a OKCPD?
Since July, yeah.
July, so about a hundred thousand dollars a month.
Correct.
That we're missing out on.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, one other question that I will ask, just in terms of, um, trust member awareness, uh, for several months, we benefited that from higher than budgeted telecommunications charges. Correct? Um, as the population declines, just an awareness that there will be revenue pressures, which is a good revenue pressure to have. But in sense of the whole budget, uh, we should be aware of that. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? What is your pleasure regarding the, um, financial reports? I've seen a motion, is there a second? Second, it has been moved and seconded, uh, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By vote of six zero, the financial reports have been received. At this point, we're ready for agenda item number four, which is the approval of invoices and claims list. Do you have any context to add to the agenda item or does, is it as submitted?
As submitted, yes.
Is there a motion? I've seen a motion, is there a second? Been moved and seconded, any questions or comments on the invoices and claims list? Absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
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 By motion of six zero, the invoices and claims list is accepted and approved. Um, agenda item number five, and I will invite Mr. Hagy to be helpful. This is my first time to have an opportunity, uh, to proceed with this process. Uh, agenda item number five is the opening of bids for inmate medical services. Any vendor wanting to review the bids may contact the interim jail administrator following this meeting.
We did receive three RFPs, um, for those services, uh, which were, the RFPs were due October thirty-first. We, we received three by the deadline and we, um, won after the deadline had passed.
Is it read into the record who the submitting entities are?
This first one, it doesn't really have anything on the outside. Uh, the only thing it says is Sharkeisha Hill, um, but it says the UPS store. So we're thinking that may be the UPS store associate. So we were going to open it so we could see who it is from. And it is taped down. Looks like it is from Integrated Correctional Healthcare.
Okay.
The second one, um, is from CHP Correctional Healthcare Partners.
Thank you.
And the last one is from, uh, Wexford Health.
Thank you, those are the three that were submitted timely.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Counsel, have we satisfied that aspect of the process?
Motion to tabulate.
There's been a motion to tabulate in return, is there a second?
Second.
There's been properly moved and seconded for tabulation in return. Any questions or discussions, absent that, please call the roll. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
What was that third company? I'm sorry, the, the last one you called off?
That Wexford.
Wex.
Yeah. Wexford.
Wexford.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, agenda item number six regards receiving and accepting and discussing reports or comments of the trust chair and the vice chair. Um, I believe you all are aware, I'm sorry. We're good, all right. Um, I believe you all are aware, as you've seen the agenda item, that I am stepping away from my service as chairman of the trust. I have been advised that, uh, trustee Griffin does not want to entertain vice chairmanship of the trust moving forward. I want to, uh, make sure the record is very clear that my stepping away from the chairmanship is not, um, reflective of my desire to step away from the trust. I have offered the commissioners my continued service through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. However, should the commissioners identify an appropriate replacement for my seat at that time, I will gladly yield, um, as appropriate. This is a decision that I made with a, a great deal of contemplation. I want to, um, as part of my comments, if I could be allowed a little bit of personal privilege to, to comment that, um, working with each of you as chair has been an extreme honor. I have, um, benefited from working with you and I hope that I have been helpful to you. The trust is at an interesting crossroads at the moment. Last meeting, you'll recall, we have launched a RFP with, um, McDan-, Mr. McDaniel's firm to evaluate, um, our process going forward. Uh, you just witnessed the opening of a medic-, uh, the medical services RFP. I was pleased to participate, um, it was publicly reported. I was pleased, pleased to participate in interviews for the behavioral health operator at the soon to be constructed behavioral health center. And I am pleased and thank you, Mr. Kimery, for reporting on the declining population in the detention center. Your work with the JNS, um, individuals is certainly noteworthy and I appreciate and applaud that. I, I give all that context as far as current state to underscore that the, the members of the trust that have chaired this body, whether it be Ms. Everest, whether it be Mr. Couch, Mr. Brown, Mr. Alba, um, and now myself, what is unique among those is I am the only working member. The others have the latitude of having time and effort available outside of the professional employment. And with the items before us, the, the thorough evaluation with Mr. McDaniel, the work on medical, I believe the trust needs, um, a chair and vice chair who have latitude to give more direct time. Uh, we are a trust that has a managing chairman, not a governing chairman. And I have tried to serve capably in my role as governing chairman, but this body and the people we serve and the people that Mr. Kimery leads deserve somebody who has more time, effort and attention to provide for the services. So I thank you for the opportunity to serve. That's my explanation of why I will be stepping away from this role and I look forward to, um, having a seat on the outer edge of the horseshoe for the next several months and, uh, helping navigate the process forward. So I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Just real quick, Mr. Buck, I brought you to this trust, uh, many years ago and want to say thank you for your service. You know, I've sat in many a meeting that, uh, we have done everything that we could to set things right. I think you have certainly led the way to set things in a better, uh, than you founded manner. And I applaud you for doing, doing so. I hate to see you go, I really do. Uh, I, I do know that working with you and your past roles and my past roles, that you definitely bring a certain, uh, je ne sais quoi to, to the board and I appreciate.
That language doesn't translate to out there. Somebody's going to have to help me out with that.
A certain something. You, you definitely bring an expertise to the, the trust that I really appreciate you serving. So just want to give you and then, uh, AJ as well, uh, my appreciation for serving. I truly appreciate it.
Thank you. At that, I'm ready to move to agenda item number seven, which is discussion. I'm sorry.
Wants to give you a bunch of flowers and.
They're not deserved, sir. They're not deserved.
They are, I could say a lot of positive things, but I, I believe this will sum it up. And I was sitting thinking, how can I come behind Commissioner Davidson and trump what he said? And I figured I can't, but here's what I can say. I cannot think of many people in my life that everything that they told me, I always have believed the person told me the truth and did not lie to me. You are one of the very few people. I'm not saying you never lied to me. No, I don't think you did, but you are one of the very few people that I have never felt that you've lied to me. Are other people, but certainly me personally, thank you for that. That means the world to me.
Now can we move on? At this point, we're ready for, thank you all very much. This point, we're ready for agenda item number seven, which is the nomination and election of a trustee to serve as chairperson for the remainder of calendar, of, of term, uh, fiscal year term, June twenty twenty-six, June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Are there nominations for the position? Are there nominations for the position?
Yes. As a, as a non-elected official, Commissioner Davidson, I would like to nominate Jim Holman to be our next chair.
There has been a motion and a second, any other nominations for Mr. Holman to serve as the next chair? May entertain, there's a motion, in a second, please call the roll. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Abstain.
By motion of five, zero, and one, congratulations, Mr. Holman. Rod, is it appropriate for me to handle the gavel, or is it appropriate for me to continue residing over this meeting?
You can do either.
Not the latter.
Congratulations, Mr. Holman.
Okay, thank you, I'm ill-prepared, I assure you, but thank you very much. I appreciate the support, and I will try to do my utmost to meet the challenge. So, we move on to item number seven, discussion of possible action to nominate an elected, oh, that's, I'm reading wrong. Might as well start off doing it wrong. Number eight, discussion of possible action to nominate an elected trustee to serve as a vice chairperson for the remainder of the term ending June 30th, 2026, according to Article VII, Section 3 of the Trust and Denture.
I make a motion that we nominate Mr. James Johnson as the vice chair.
Second.
Well, thank you for that vote of confidence, but I would have to respectfully decline. As you said about being working, and that's where I'm at, quite a bit on my plate, so.
Motion rescinded.
There you go.
Thank you. Moving on to it.
Now, as soon as we can pull this, is there a way to get it to?
Vote to rescind. Motion.
Motion is made, we have a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I'm sorry. I was not paying attention to, okay, all right, I didn't want to just say yes.
Right.
Yes.
Motion rescinded.
At this point, we would take other nominations for vice chair.
Motion to nominate Derek Scobie.
We have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
May, uh, okay. So, maybe people don't think that I work.
Would you find it always here?
Yeah, past the full-time, and yeah, growing business and community activity. When I tell you, I don't want to do this no more than the man in the boat, I mean that with every fiber in me. That's not a pseudo-statement. But obviously, I mean, I don't know what else to do with this. Yeah, but I mean, it's nothing I can do. Go ahead.
Careful, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
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 Staying. Yes.
Yes. Okay, moving on to agenda item number nine. Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, I had a chance, Ms. Engelke was unaware of the agenda item, and she had texted me earlier today advising that she was unable to attend today.
Move to agenda 10. And that's the announcement of the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority in 2025, to be on Monday, December 8th, 2025. No action required, right?
That's correct. Does recommend executive, executive session?
Executive, we have items for executive session, motion to adjourn to executive session.
And seconded.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. We're turned.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Agenda item fourteen.
Motion to proceed as discussed.
We have a motion, second.
Second.
Yes.
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 Yes. Agenda item fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to proceed as discussed.
We have a motion, second.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. And lastly, agenda item sixteen, action regarding the appointment of interim jail administrator.
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we make Tim Kim Ray the permanent jail administrator. And I do want to make a few comments before. I don't want it to be stated that we're removing the title interim because that almost feels like to me is just, well, it's our best choice, so we'll just take it off. No, I'm making the motion that we make him our permanent jail administrator. But also, I do want to make the distinction because we've had a lot of news media outlets who have failed to this if it would be the pleasure of my fellow trust members that it would be a distinction that he is not the CEO. We historically have had that, but now we are moving forward with the jail administrator. And at some point, we may look to have a CEO, but for today, jail administrator that I'm making a long way around the mountain motion to say that I would like to make a motion for Tim Kim Ray to be our next jail administrator. And I would hope that we would understand this is not just a good man. He is very knowledgeable as it relates to running this Oklahoma County Detention Center as jail administrator.
Thank you Pastor. And we have a second. So could we have a roll call please?
Yes.
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 Yes. And lastly, would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. Chair.
Yes sir.
If it would be okay if Mr. Kim Ray would just take a brief moment to express whatever's in his mind on his heart. Very brief, briefly.
Well, thank you Pastor. Kind of an honor being nominated by you, so I appreciate that. Let me just say that I'm committed to doing what's required to right the ship at the Oklahoma County Jail. I can assure you that I'm going to be a very proactive in what we do. You know, what's key, and the sheriff will tell you this, you got to have the right people in the right places to be able to accomplish that. And that's what we're going to do. I'm going to have competent, intelligent, smart people in those places that can help me make the right decisions. And I'm very aware and familiar with all the things that's been said about Oklahoma County Jail. And we're going to get it maybe not totally fixed, but we're going to get it in a whole lot better shape than what it is right now. And we're going to work hard, and we're going to put in a lot of hours that we've already done, myself and my staff. And let me just say, the staff has, I'm very proud of what they've done so far in the last month. They've really stepped up to the plate and done the things that I've asked them to do. And we're going to, I've got some strategic goals and objectives. And it's, I don't know everything, and there's a lot to learn. There's a thousand moving pieces to that place over there and issues. And it's not just one thing. There's a lot. But I'm going to take this job very, very seriously that I think I've done in all the positions I've been in before. And I care about the men and women that work over there. I care about the inmates, that they are properly looked after and the welfare is being addressed. And we're going to do the very best that we can. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have a motion and a second to adjourn.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.